This meeting is being recorded. I'm going to call to order a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Today is Friday, April 24, 2020, at 11:31 a.m. And this meeting is available on Zoom. And there was login, I'm sorry, a link to video and phone for our residents. There's one item on the agenda, and that's our budget workshop. I apologize, I shouldn't have started with this. This is Erica Wischinsky for Selectmen. I have to remind ourselves to identify ourselves every time we speak. I say that for my brain to remember as well as everyone else's. So as we discussed at the Board of Selectmen meeting on Monday, we had been given a communication from the Board of Finance to deliver them to alternative budgets from the budget we had already, we had first admitted. So we first admitted over about an 11% increase. I then brought to you a budget with a 4.5% increase, which we then, we did pass that along to the Board of Finance. On Monday night, I presented to you a version that got us to zero. We need to present to them a budget at zero and a negative 3% over last year's budget, over this current fiscal year budget. I apologize. And what the ramifications of such cuts would be. So some explanation of what that would look like. So if we, I want to start by sharing a couple of things with you. Donna is on the phone, and I'm going to, I want to unmute her, but I don't know what your phone number is. Give me one second.
Hi, Erica.
Hi, Donna. So you're, oops. Okay, so I've unmuted Donna. And when you're ready, Donna will share the screen with us so we can look in real time at some of the budget numbers. And let me know when you want to do that, Donna. I want to start with sharing a couple of things that we have, information, updated information we have gotten since we last met. We now know that our, what was to be at least, at most, a 7% increase in insurance is now final at a 2.3% increase. So the 0% budget I showed you on Monday had a 3.3% increase. We can get that down to 2.3 and true up that number. So that's another $6,010. You're saying that $6,010 is already included, Donna?
No, I think what you have, the $6,000 that was taken into consideration and counted as savings, got you to zero. There's no additional savings. You've already, I already have the savings in for you.
So you had already put in the 2.3, not the 3.3?
Yes.
Okay.
Already put in the 2.3.
Okay, so that's my error. But we do know that final number. So we're sending them a true number, which we don't typically have the luxury of having this time of year. We also, as you know, there's a potential loss in fuel because our buses aren't running. Our town vehicles are still running, but the loss of fuel that we purchased is coming from the school side. We've been working with our vendor. Donna has done a great amount of work with Phil and I on working on how we could negotiate a rate. And as you can imagine, it's just as difficult for our source as it is for us. So what we've, what we're working on negotiating is a fuel credit into this fiscal budget off of what we didn't use this year but paid for. And so we're estimating the town's portion of that to be about $4,000 in savings in fuel to potentially offset what we didn't use but have had to pay for by our contract. In addition to that, we, Donna worked with them. We've locked in to dime oil for next, not this coming fiscal year, but next fiscal year, 2122 diesel fuel and heating oil rates at $1.6342 and $1.6422. So we haven't seen rates that low in about 10 years. So thank you, Donna, for your work securing those prices. We're currently paying to 15 in this budget. And so that's a significant savings for the following year that we know about today. So do we want to start with looking at the zero budget that I presented and start from there? Okay, and that included CIP. So I'm going to, Donna, at the bottom of your screen, if you scroll down, there should be a share, share screen button, I believe. Can you see that?
Yes. Am I disabled because I have it?
It's not allowing.
On the screen?
Okay, we may not be able to see it, but Donna will have her, while we work on that, Donna working on, on her computer at the very least so we can look and see what the numbers are. Apologies.
Are you not seeing it?
I, I see it, but I, you're able to share my screen, which we don't want. I don't see that I'm able to share with you. So we're going to stop sharing because that's no good. So Donna will work in real time on her computer. Apologize, technology sometimes works, sometimes it doesn't. So you each have the packets available to you, is that correct? I'll, the 0%, you can see the cuts that I made in the spreadsheet Donna gave you. One by one, you, what? Let's see, let's see if we can figure out. Okay, Liza.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so you have a spreadsheet to show all of the cuts that got us from the 4.5 to zero. I guess we should start with formulating a 0% budget and then work from there on a 3% budget and what that would look like, unless you like to do this in a different manner. John, do you see of those cuts, things you think you would like to back in or cuts from somewhere else?
I would, we're starting with CIP, I assume.
We can, yes.
Okay. Well, we have the cuts on the CIP here, which on your spreadsheet, which all sound good to me. I would like to add, however, that CIP, we obviously have to make lease payments. So those, those are pretty much untouchable. And I think the Capital Reserve Fund looks about right. However, and there's a couple of things that I think we should remain in the CIP. The pillars for Hall School really, really need to be done, I understand. And the boiler at Hall School and also the boiler in the Town Office Building, I believe should stay in. A couple of items I think we could cut out. The town, or the town, Old Town Hall,
Septic.
Septic Tank. That's, that's a, that's a project that's near to my heart. But this year, we are going to be hurting and we're going to have, I think we should cut that out, or at least, let's say we're going to defer these for a year. Maybe a year from now, the economy will be back and we can do this. But right now, I don't think it's going to be back. But I wouldn't want to take that chance. I also wonder if we really have to replace the Public Works, the 2011 F-350 pickup truck. That's 38,000. And also the pickleball court. Again, I know that everybody wants that, but I think we can cut that. And finally, of course, the elephant in the room, the $100,000 for consultants for the school building committee. We don't currently have a school building committee. I think we at least could put that off for another year. So I would make a motion that in addition to the cuts proposed by the first selectman from CIP, that we add these cuts. So item 1.26, $100,000 from the District Building Committee Consultants. Item 2.19, $45,000 for the Old Town Hall Septic Systems. Item 2.3, Public Works replaced the 2011 F-350 pickup truck. And item 6.1, RRC Pickleball Court for $39,346.
I'll second that for discussion purposes. Erica Wischinsky for Selectmen. Donna, can you speak to us? The items, all of the items that John is proposing, we take off this plan are not on budget. So they are not affecting the bottom line of this budget, correct?
Correct. That's correct.
Those dollars are coming from the Reserve, the General Reserve Fund?
Some from General Reserve, some from LoSeP.
John Blessington.
They're all off budget.
All off-budget numbers.
All off-budget numbers, does this mean we don't spend the money? I understand LoSeP, although again, look at what's going on at the state. The state's not, doesn't have any money. And not, they may not necessarily have that money available to us this year. The off-budget comes from the general fund. That means we're still spending the money. We're just not, not adding it in right now. So I don't think that's, I think we should take them out of there, too. We cannot afford to spend the money this year.
I, I had highlighted several of the same line items that you highlighted, John. So I guess the question is, if we don't spend that money, even though it's off-budget, is there a way to put it in the budget to reimburse ourselves in other areas that we do need to spend for like hard costs that we can't cut? So is there a way to take, for example, the, so one of my questions was, if we don't do the Old Town Hall Septic this year, does that mean that we have reduced ability to use the facility?
Erica Wischinsky for Selectmen. I, I do not believe, my actual recommendation would have been to remove that and include the concrete floor here with LoSeP money instead of the Town Hall, the subject of the Old Town Hall this year. I know certainly there's, there's a potential, Liza, but that potential exists today as it did a year ago with that item. And if something happens, we would then have to, we would, we would have to do something at that point. So I think it could get pushed off a year with what we're, what we're asking, being asked to do here. I don't see any reason why. There's always a risk, certainly. But I think that risk with that particular item has existed for several years. I would, what you would have heard me suggest is that we add back in the concrete floor in the basement here at the Town Office Building. We've certainly got a weight issue in the attic and need to get those things out of there as well as, you know, continuous mold issues in both areas. So doing what we can to mitigate that, and that is LoSeP funds. John, it's not to say we can't do these things. I just wanted to clarify that as we're looking at dollars, these items that we've highlighted here in this motion just won't affect the real dollars of the budget we're looking to present. So it's still work to be done, but we're not affecting our overall budget.
John Blessington, well, first to answer, Liza, I'm not sure what you're asking here. Are you saying, well, gee, since we're saving this money here on the Septic System, can we spend it somewhere else? And I thought the purpose of this meeting was to see if we could spend less, not to, not to just kind of shuffle the budget around and still spend the same amount.
No, Selectwoman Borets. So my question was, since Erica was saying that this money is off-budget, so it wouldn't affect our bottom line. So if we remove the $45,000 from the CIP budget, we still, it doesn't make a dent in reducing our budget by 3%. So what I'm saying is, if we reallocate this to a different line item, is, do we have the ability to reallocate this money that we are, that we have to a different line item to relieve some of the press, pressure in a different line item for hard costs that we are required to pay? Does that make sense? And I'm, it's just a logistical question, and I just.
Erica Wischinsky for Selectmen. And Donna, I'll ask you to weigh in. It's possible that we could move, we could then move, if we took those items off, the school items cannot be used with LoSeP money. So we couldn't replace on-budget items with off-budget. And that's what I think I hear you saying. Can we, if we take these off, can we take some items that are affecting the budget and use those dollars for them? So the two school items, we could not. We could, with the new boiler from here, I believe we could use LoSeP money for that project. Donna, would you agree with me on that?
Yes, I would.
Okay. We could not use LoSeP money for the truck. So we really, right now, we have three items on budget in this current revision of CIP. So one of them, we could take off local funds that would reduce our budget by $10,000, or some portion of that, and then allow us to use different funds. But the two school items cannot be used with LoSeP money.
Okay, John Blessington, you're going to, I'm sorry, you're going to have to educate me here because I'm a little confused. Go back to the Old Town Hall Septic, $45,000, which it's off-budget. So does that mean we're still going to replace the Septic System? Where is the $45,000 going to go?
If LoSeP, we would use LoSeP funds to, to do that project. So the $45,000 would come from LoSeP funds. So Liza's saying that the items that have 930 next to them, those are number, real dollars in our budget for next year that we're budgeting for. So if we took the $45,000 project off, could we use $45,000 worth of projects in its place off-budget? That's what I hear her saying. And unfortunately, we only have three projects left on here that would be using local dollars. And LoSeP does not allow you to do anything with schools with those dollars. So the boiler here would be the only thing we could use with LoSeP funds. And that would reduce our budget.
Okay, where is the $45,000 in the LoSeP, or in the, or let's skip to something else, then, say the truck, $38,000. Where does the money come from for that 30? It's coming from the CIP budget, I understand. But how did the money get in the CIP budget?
Donna, you want to try and take that one?
Yes, the money gets in the CIP budget. And it is a fund transfer, and it is in the Capital Reserve. And that's the great outline item. That's, and that's code 504. So we put the money in the Reserve Fund through a fund transfer. Those are tax dollars. And the, the truck is a payment that's, then it becomes off-budget. And the truck is a payment that comes out of the Reserve.
Okay, so then this money presumably in the Reserve will have to be replaced. We're replacing
Yes.
$162,000 this year, and that's in the budget.
Yes.
We're not, this is not money that's just magically appearing.
No, we put it into the.
No taxpayers' money that we are spending. And the whole point here is we are going to run into problems with taxpayers this year because so many people are losing their jobs. And I thought the point here was to try to lower our payments. We're, so whether we spend it out of the Capital Reserve or the General Fund or whatever, we're still spending taxpayer's dollars. And that's what I think we should be trying to, try to cut out this year.
Selectwoman Borets, so yes, the challenge is, when we go into the Board of Selectmen budget, we do not have costs that we can remove from that budget that equals anything significant. Like, so I went through line by line of the Selectmen's budget outside of the CIP piece of the budget. And if we remove everything, we have like $14,000 of flexibility that I could identify within the Selectmen's budget total, right? That we actually have the ability to say, right now, we could remove from the budget. So that still leaves us with over $100,000 worth of cuts that we have to figure out how to make. So we have to be creative in figuring out how we do that. And, you know, so part of my question is, if we have, and so I'm going to use my own layman's terms because I don't know exactly all the line items and all of that. But like, let's say, using my own life situation, I have a couple thousand dollars in a savings account. My monthly expenses are more than what I'm taking in an income right now. So what I need to do is take some money from my savings account and put it in my daily operating funds, right? So my question is, the, this money that you've highlighted that doesn't currently reflect our budget, is this essentially like a savings account? Can we switch where it's allocated so that we're not using, so that we're using funds that we have in savings or that we've already collected and we have somewhere that exists in a bank account, rather than needing to collect new money to pay for these costs that we're not able to remove from our budget? Like salaries, like hard costs for electricity, for funding our buildings, for, you know, sand and salt that we need to have safe roads. These are costs that we can't really remove from our budget. Is that making sense?
This is Donna. It's, it makes sense to me, but that's the operating budget, and the CIP is the capital budget. So I think that, if I understand, Liza, what you're asking, I don't think we could take money of, you know, like from the capital budget and use it on the operating budget.
Okay.
Is that what you're getting at? You want to recycle money from the Reserve Fund, but that's capital money. And the budget that we're working on is the operating budget.
So if, so the, sorry, Selectwoman Borets, so the money that gets into the capital, you just said we transferred that money in to the Capital Reserve.
Yes.
Where initially did that start from?
That starts from the operating budget.
Okay, so is it possible, Selectwoman Borets again, is it possible to transfer it back out of the Capital Reserve and put it back into the operating budget? Like I would have to do if I had a savings account and I was not able to pay my monthly bills with what I'm taking in an income?
Selectwoman Blessington, haven't we done that over the last couple of years? Didn't we buy a truck? We went to the Capital Reserve Fund because we decided we needed a truck right then. So we took it out of the, out of the Capital Reserve. And so we're doing that basically.
Donna, this is Donna. We took it out of the fund balance, not out of the Capital Reserve. It's two different accounts. You're correct, we took it out of fund balance.
Okay, and where does the fund balance get its money?
The fund balance gets its money because at the end of every budget year, there is either a surplus or there is a deficit. And the fund balance, and it just gets added, that surplus gets added to the fund balance. Or if it's a year where there's a deficit, and by design, we used money from the fund balance, then we subtract from the fund balance.
And what's the fund balance right now? Do you have any idea?
Yes. Yes, I have that number for you. We are forecasting that at the end of the year, the fund balance will be 2.5 million.
Really?
Yes.
Donna, can you tell, First Black Woman Wischinsky, can you tell me the percentage of that current fund balance?
It's 14.6%. Our policy.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Our, our fiscal policy calls for the town to maintain a fund balance in the range of 8 to 12%.
So the Capital Reserve Fund, which I always, we always talk about as being our savings account. Okay, we have what? That's at 710,000 or something like that? Or we have another $2.5 million? Wait, where does this, where does this count?
I'm, I'm not sure I understood your question, John.
Well, I'm not sure I understand. We're putting here, we're putting $162,000 into the Capital Reserve to bring it up to 710,000. And we had called the Capital Reserve, we were talking, that is our savings account. That's the money.
So Selectwoman Wischinsky, that's for capital improvement or capital purchases. So let's say we removed this project and we didn't do the boiler here, and we needed a new boiler. That's where we'd go to to take those funds from first, correct, Donna? We would go to the Capital Reserve.
Yes.
If the Septic at the Old Town Hall suddenly failed and we had, or the, what's there now? We need to put in a Septic. We would go to the Capital Reserve Fund. So if we didn't identify individual projects, we could put funds into the Capital Reserve and then go through the process of taking money if it was needed from that reserve. So you put, you're putting money away. And each year, the CIP plan puts dollars away on top of the projects, puts some dollars into that fund in order to utilize it for capital expenditures.
Okay.
So we could do a couple of things. We could remove all of the projects, but still leave the funding to capital improvements so that when we needed to draw from it, there were items. I think it's important to put into capital. The items at the top of your plan, you can see items through number 15. Those are previous commitments so that we have to honor those. Everything below the line would be new. And if you're looking at the back portion, those that use fund 17, those would be from the ambulance fund, which is represented here, but on a, funded from a different budget.
Selectwoman Borets, so, I mean, I know, I know practice is to put the money in the Capital Reserve. In difficult times, is there any justification for not doing that? Because that affects the bottom line, correct?
Yes.
So is there justification for not building up our savings account at the moment when we're concerned that we're not going to have enough money to pay our bills?
I know that I, I know it's important to put something into capital, whether we do all of it, we could lessen that amount. It is something for us to think about. I think there's different philosophies on, on how you should fund capital. And in these times, we're looking at different. So if we take the projects away, and if something needs to be done, then they need to come before the town with a request from the Capital Reserve Fund. Donna, if we didn't put in the $165,000 Donna, if we didn't put in the hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, now what would, what would that? What would we have in that fund? Can you tell me?
If we didn't put in the 162, then I wouldn't spend the 100,000 on the building committee consultants. And I wouldn't spend, I wouldn't spend the money on the pickleball court. So if you don't put money in, then I wouldn't spend money from the reserve.
And so then what would be most likely is if we had a capital issue, we would more than likely have to go to the general fund.
Fund balance, yes.
Into that fund balance for anything that we needed.
Yes, you can. Can use it for capital.
Currently in this plan, and one of the items John highlighted, and I'm going to unmute our public works director who's on the line with us. I left in this truck. His truck needs to be replaced and it's, it's on that schedule to be. If it weren't replaced and then the vehicle he was using would then be a vehicle with a plow and that would put us at a disadvantage there. His truck does not currently, this truck would not have a plow. And that's why we left this truck in the plan as opposed to one of the others, we thought we could push them out a year. Elect Troy, if we didn't replace your truck this year, do you think you could get it to go one more year?
Well, yeah, the truck will run because what, the whole plan was is the maroon truck has a cracked frame on. So basically that truck shouldn't be driven around. So that's why it was the plan was to take my truck that has a plow on it and that would replace that truck that plows the parking lots. That's what the whole plan was. If that doesn't, then we're still, we'd be down one plow vehicle for the parking lots. Now we still have our old truck that didn't get replaced. Well, that got replaced with a new dump truck. That can plow the parking lots, but if that doesn't happen, if that truck breaks down, we still don't have a big spare dump truck. Because we took out the, the big six-wheel truck, the, one of our big plow trucks. Does that make sense?
It does to me.
It makes sense. I'm sorry, it makes sense to me too, except once again, everybody's going to have to be making, getting along with less and making sacrifices this year. And I, that's another item, I think, yeah, it would be nice to have. There's a lot of nice to have items that maybe we can get by through another year before we, and see how things are going to be extra. Because this year they're looking like they're going to be really, really bad.
So first select woman Waschinsky, while I think all these things are nice to have, if it breaks and we have a need, we still have to make sure we have equipment to properly plow. So it would then be us coming back to the town, asking for a purchase from one of these funds because it would be then a need. You know, I think we could, if it were just a matter of one truck that we wanted to replace, I would have pulled it off of here. It's part of a whole plan. And which is why we left this one truck on. If we, if we take this, this project off and remove it, but we're, you know, we just kind of cross our fingers and hope everything stays stable. And that's very possible.
Select woman in Boris, I feel like, you know, I, I feel like that is a key point that you just made, is that we can't foresee the future. We don't know what's going to break down. It very well may be that nothing does and we're fine and we can kind of limp through another year. Or we, you know, put into a budget, a truck that we that, putting into the budget, the truck that we know will make sure that we have the redundancy that we will want to have really is going to mean, like I look through the budget, I don't see any way that we can save all of these capital expenditures and also our staff. So I feel like we have to choose whether or not we want to take that risk. And then if we do need to get a truck, we still have the ability to go back and say, Board of Finance, we need this truck, we need to, that, you know, we had a truck that broke. We need to go back and request some more funds. So I would rather do that process, even though it might take a little bit longer of, in the event that we have a breakdown, go back and, and do the process of requesting additional funds, than say preemptively, we're having to cut staff positions in order to purchase a truck in the event that we have a breakdown, which we don't know if it's going to happen or not. And that the truck will, we don't know if the truck is going to be a requirement or not in the, come the winter. So.
Waschinsky, and again, we're talking about making those cuts to get us to the 3%. Right, we're looking at, is that what we're looking at? And that's a hundred, a hundred and four thousand 670 dollars. So we could put 104,670 less into our capital reserve and preserve the remainder of the budget. And that's one option. I know there is a motion on the floor. I have another proposal as well that does not affect CIP, so that would allow us to cut about that 104,000 dollars. If you want to vote on this motion and then.
Can we table John's motion then? Can we table his motion?
Well, are we? You're getting, getting a hundred and forty-five, I'm getting about 204,000 dollars here. We take off the items that I have put on, in my motion. Hundred thousand dollars for the school building committee. Forty-five thousand for the Old Town Hall septic. Thirty-eight thousand for the F-350 pickup truck and about 40,000 for the, 39,346 for the pickleball court.
First select woman Waschinsky, I wouldn't suggest cutting that many dollars from the capital reserve fund because again, it's important that we put some money into that to draw from in the event we have capital expenditures that would need to be done. And so if we could cut it instead of the 145, we could say no projects. We could say no to those projects, but still put the dollars into the fund without cutting the, the exact dollars that go along with them, but say no projects. That is, that is what we could do with your suggestion. Does that make sense, Liza, to you and John? I can see John.
Yes, select woman in Boris, I'm not sure I get that.
So you'd still put money into that gray line is, is dollars we'd put into the fund source, which is 504, which is the reserve fund. And then eliminate the projects, but not eliminate every dollar that we put into that fund. There'd be no project associated with it. So in the event there was a capital need, we would, the need would have to come back to the town and request money from that reserve fund. There would be no project on the books ready to go and to begin working on. But if a need arose, something here broke and we needed to replace it, we'd draw from the reserve fund. So instead of cutting 145,000 dollars out of the reserve fund, we've cut the 104,000 that we needed to get to zero. I'm sorry, to get to negative three. And that leaves us some funding in there for unnamed projects that may, that may not get done, but we have put money into capital to preserve the need for capital expenditures.
I don't, John Blessing, I don't recall that I asked not to put the money into the capital reserve fund. I'm talking about spending money out of the capital reserve fund.
Right, that's what I said, John, but instead of cutting the, the total amount of dollars out of the fund, we would just say, cut the fund by X number of dollars and there are no projects. These projects don't exist.
Well, we do have projects that we will be.
Yes. But the ones that you're suggesting, those projects from capital reserve would then not happen.
Correct.
For example, you know, the, the septic dollars wouldn't, that's low sub fund, so that 45,000 wouldn't come from capital. We wouldn't be cutting that dollar amount out of capital.
Okay, but you would be cutting 100,000 dollars out of the school consultant.
If that motion passes.
Well, you know, I'm.
I mean, that was your motion, so if your motion weren't to pass, that would, that would be what that would come from.
Okay. And we would be cutting the pickup truck. So there's 138,000 there and the pickleball court, does that come out of LoSAP?
The pickleball court was in, nope, that was in reserve.
So the 45,000.
Could potentially be used in LoSAP funds.
So the 45,000 dollars out of, is the only one that would be coming out of LoSAP and risk would be coming out of the capital reserve.
Correct. But I wouldn't suggest cutting equal dollars out of the reserve fund.
I didn't suggest that.
I, I think there's clearly some miscommunication, John, between your dollars.
You're right, you're right.
You could cut the project and then adjust what dollars we cut from the reserve fund.
Okay.
So.
That works for me.
Okay. But the question Liza had was, can we table your motion to look at a separate potential cut to get us to 3%?
And you're talking, that would be the cuts out of the regular budget then?
Yes.
That we've talked about, okay. You want to table the motion on the CIP?
Are you making a motion, Liza, to table the?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to table the current active motion that John made.
Okay, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Eric Waschinsky, aye. Okay, so, um, Troy, I don't know if you can unmute yourself. As you know, we've been, I've been looking over this and so have our department heads, who most are on the phone right now, most of their budgets. There's not a whole lot in them that's to cut or that's not truing up some real dollars. Troy and I sat down and we already took some considerable dollars out of his proposed budget. He came to me yesterday with a suggestion of a way to cut the entire 104,000 out of his budget. It's, it's a thought, it's a plan, and I'd like him to discuss that with us now. Troy?
All right. Basically, I think the roads are a huge thing in town. I don't want to cut anything, but I was kind of thinking that, and before we cut staff out of a department that, I, I think we, we need everybody here. That there's 104,000 that need to be cut out of the chip seal budget, there's 115,000. So with that roughly, I can get about maybe five, six miles of road chip sealed with that 115,000 this year. If we were to take that 115,000 and just take that plan completely away and we don't chip seal this year, the next budget is the paving budget, there's 145,000. If we were to take that budget and actually prep the roads, a little, do a little bit more prep, that means doing some shim, some overlays, fixing the edges of the road, some drainage. We could probably next year do some crack seal, do some asphalt rejuvenator to prolong the life of the road. And we actually could probably next year take the whole 145,000 and 115,000 and put it into chip seal where you could get probably between 10 to 15, maybe 16 miles of road chip sealed next year. It would give us time that the town crew could actually prep the roads a little bit better than being in a rush next year. We, this summer, we can do these projects and do that. So that's where I think that we could save a little bit before we, we cut staff or we do other things. It was just a suggestion. I do believe we should put more money into the roads, but this year I, that's, I'm trying, that's all.
Select woman Waschinsky, thank you, Troy. So Troy presented me with this item yesterday while trying to see what a cut would look like in his department. And he spoke to how important he thought it was to preserve staff in his department. They certainly didn't expect a 104,000 dollar cut on the table, but it's an interesting, it's an interesting concept. So what he's saying is use, don't use the money for chip seal at all, Troy, right? And you're going to do, you think you could shim, crack seal and using this asphalt rejuvenator on, on the 10 to 15 miles of road that then you would chip seal next year? Or would it be less miles, you'd be able to fix this year, but use all of next year's money to chip seal?
Yeah, so like that of the 145,000, that would be out of the paving. That we would be doing some like, some shimming on the edge of the road for prepping for the chip seal for next year. Crack sealing? You put crack seal, it could last four or five years. So there's some roads that, you know, and we have such a small budget for crack sealing. I was in a, I talked to a contractor yesterday, he said, depending on how bad the road is cracked, we could get about a mile out of about 6,500 dollars. So with taking that money, we, we could be actually saying that we could do maybe five miles of crack seal depending on the roads. And then, so those five years, those five roads are preserved. We could take another five miles of road, maybe do some rejuvenator. A mile of rejuvenator is between 12 and 15,000. So we can prolong, we can get, keep getting longer and longer life out of it. Some of the roads that need to be chipped, need to be crack sealed and chipped for next year. But some of the roads that we would actually spend crack seal on because there's more money to spend, we could prolong those. So we might get three years before we would chip seal that road that got crack sealed this year by putting more, more money into prepping the roads instead of just, just crack seal or just chip sealing and say, oh, we just chip seal. Instead of prolong the road. That's, that's where I'm trying to get at. If that makes sense.
Liza, thoughts?
Yes, select woman in Boris, yeah, that, I think I'm understanding what you're saying. And if I'm not misunderstanding, it sounds like there could potentially be some long-term benefit to delaying more chip sealing to allow more, I guess, to focus on the structural integrity of the roads rather than just chip sealing them as standard process. I mean, if, this absolutely 100% not my area of expertise, Troy. But if, you know, if you're saying that they're, that saving this money this year could potentially benefit our roads in the long term, I don't see where there's much of a downside to that plan. The only question I have is, you know, as long as, you know, we will have the ability to do, you know, like we have a lot of dirt roads, will we still have the ability within that, within those cuts to, you know, address some of the issues that the dirt roads experience coming out of winter?
Yes, I mean, there is that, still that money in there. I'm not exactly sure that comes out of for like gravel roads.
Okay.
That there is still for process and stuff. So that, that didn't get touched. So yes, that would be, there is still money for that, yes. Yep.
John?
I don't know, the road, the road, you know, that's one of the basic basic functions of our government and we do keep putting them off year after year because of the budget, because of budgetary things. So I'm a little little nervous about doing that. Chip sealing now, and I know I'm not sounding very consistent here, but not doing chip sealing now might mean a lot more money in the future to fix the road. I was going through the budget here and I was finding places where we could save a few, a few dollars here and a few dollars there. We're not going to save 104,000 dollars off of it. With one question. And here again, I would like to read into the minutes. This is the editorial from Chris Powell and the Journal Inquirer of April 18th. If you'll bear with me. "It's bad enough that the wages and benefits of state municipal government employees have been completely protected even as the governor's own orders have thrown tens of thousands of people out of work in the private sector. For state government to pay raises while unemployment explodes in the private sector and state tax collections collapse would be crazy. More proof that nothing matters more to the state government than the contentment of its own employees whose unions long have controlled the majority political party. But the governor is not helpless here. Using his emergency powers, he could suspend collective bargaining for state employees and binding arbitration of their contracts for six months at a time or modify those laws to strengthen public administration during the emergency. He should do so for as." He should do so for, as the trickle on television says, we're all supposed to be into this, in this together. And let's face it, folks, the big, the, this elephant in this room is, uh, is our employees and the cost of employees. I'm not saying we should lay anybody off, but how much are we spending on salary increases this year? I don't think we can do about it."
Do you want that number, John? I can tell you that a two percent for those in the selectmen's budget is thirty thousand, three hundred, thirty-five dollars.
Okay, and how about in the education budget?
I don't have those numbers. That is not in our budget, and so I, I don't have those real, those dollars at my-
Well, that's part of the town's budget.
It is, but the budget workshop where you were here to work on currently is the selectmen's budget, so these are the numbers we have control over.
There is a, uh, now, I had made a motion the other night that, to the effect that we write the governor and ask him to do what Mr. Powell has decided, seemed to like the idea, and ask him to issue an executive order canceling these increases. Dan's now about the only thing we could possibly do is cut increases for non-union employees. I know you, Erica, have put in your budget proposal that you not get a raise this year, thank you. I think we should, could also at least add in that other two selectmen not get any raise in their stipend, and, um, are there any other people in town that we could bypass a raise for this year?
Hi, Selectwoman Boritz, I am more than happy to, as a, as a gesture, throw in that we, as the selectmen, don't get our, don't get a two percent raise. I am more than happy to do that, I think, absolutely in a show of solidarity and a show of, and, and I believe it to be, you know, a, a good thing to do, however, it's, that's two hundred and thirty-four dollars on our line, on the end result of our line item, so I, I think, yeah, I will absolutely, right now, make, support that motion and, and, and vote to, to give up the two percent for, for us. I, I, it does, it's not anything more than a token gesture, which I am, again, happy to do. I think in considering Troy's plan, and this is why I asked that question, if, if what Troy is telling us is that in the long term, this plan could be more beneficial for the quality of our roads, I don't necessarily see how we lose by doing Troy's plan. So, John, if you can give some suggestions, you know, share your perspective on how we lose. If Troy is saying that this plan in the long term is better for our town roads, then how does this way of rethinking how he's going to address road maintenance this year and save us a hundred and four thousand dollars with one single sweep, how is that, how is that bad?
Well, Selectwoman Blessington, um, if this is going, if we were saying, well, the roads won't get too much worse if we save that hundred and four thousand dollars, I'd say, okay, well, we might think about it. But now we're being told they'll be even better if we save that hundred and four thousand, then why weren't, wasn't this in the budget in the first place?
Selectwoman Boritz, that's not the question. So, the question to you is, regardless of why it wasn't in the budget in the first place, in this time, we have asked everybody to think creatively about their budget, so do we say, well, if you didn't propose it in the first place, then it's not a good plan? Or do we say, you have had an opportunity to think creatively about your budget, and now you feel you've come up with something better? Do we then reject that plan because he didn't initially propose it when we didn't know we had a, we were going to have a budget crisis months ago before, you know, our economy essentially gets shut down? So, um, so the fact that he didn't mention it earlier, does that mean now it's not a good idea? If he's telling us it's a good idea and it could work, then why would we not consider that a viable option?
Selectwoman Waschinsky, if you recall, Troy actually added money to these line items, not less. He, he knows that our roads need attention. What he did was, even after making the cuts, cutting the increases that he asked for, he's proposing a solution to save, to save town funds, and, and what he thinks with the dollars he has available to better prepare our roads, is what I'm hearing. I certainly often have concerns about when I hear no chip sealing and what that will mean. But we have a public works director with knowledge on roads, and I think it's important to take him up on that. Do I think that this is what we should do? I'm still torn. I'd like to hear from Troy, solid Troy, raise his hand on any concerns, but we need to remember that he asked for more dollars in here, not less, and he's trying to find the best way to use the dollars that he has, and if he thinks using less dollars, he can be more productive with our roads, I think it's worth listening to the conversation.
I did, that's, I was just gonna say, because I did put more money in to fix the roads. That's, you could give a million dollars a year to fix the roads, and you still wouldn't have enough. But the whole thing is, is that when you can crack seal rejuvenator, and it buys you some time to fix the roads in the correct way. So that, that's all it is, it's just, would I recommend it every year? Absolutely not. But in this time before you would cut staff or before you find in other places, if this is one big shot of money, I think we could chip seal, we could, you could give me three hundred thousand dollars and I could find a place to put it on the roads. That's not a problem. There's plenty of roads in town that need more than just chip seal. That's, that need a whole, whole depth reclamation to clean them right out. Proper drainage, all that stuff. Am I guaranteeing you that? No, not with that hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. But if we can crack seal six miles of road, or just to say roughly for this, well, maybe that next year, we won't have to chip seal those six miles of road. You preserve that road now because you've stopped the water from going into the cracks. So now we can go work on another six miles of road. So we could prolong it that way. That's all I'm saying. It's, do I agree with taking all that money and taking the road money? No, but it's a, it's an option, and I just, I just presented it to you, and that's, that's all, it doesn't, we don't have to do that, but that's what I think we could do before we, you know, make some other major cuts in town.
Any more comments, questions on this particular cut? So we have a, a potential of cutting all of the hundred and four, six seventy, to get us to a three percent out of CIP, taking all of it from, um, public works, one line item. I'm hearing John say he'd like to cut it in other places, specifically salary increases. That, again, is only thirty thousand. Oh, look, Donna can share now, yay! I made some changes that I hoped could help, but I wasn't sure. Um, Donna, if you take the money out of Troy's line item, can you show us what that looks like? We could also consider a combination of the two, but again, the, the salary increases with your two hundred and thirty-six still in there was only thirty thousand, three hundred, thirty-five dollars. That would still leave us with seventy-four thousand dollars to cut from somewhere. And it's important that when we send this budget to the Board of Finance, it would be from the, where would you be taking the hundred and four, from the oil roller and chipper, correct, Troy?
Thank you, Erica.
And stone, I believe, was that the line?
One oh four. Could you confirm that you would like one oh four taken from the chip seal, oil roller and chipper line?
Yeah, Donna, the line number two thirty-five?
Yes, two thirty-five, take out a hundred and four thousand.
Hundred and four thousand, yep.
Okay. Okay, so there you are, Erica. Selectmen's budget is at a minus three.
Selectwoman Boritz, um, Troy, if, let's say there was a way, a reason to, to split the difference a little bit and say, and take half of it out of that line item and half of it out of the CIP budget, does having half of it in that line item make any significant difference for you, or is it more, you know, is it an all or nothing situation, or, um, does having fifty-two thousand dollars still in that line item get you more than, you know, nothing? Does that make sense?
A little bit. So you're saying, so if I just, instead of taking a hundred and four, we'll take fifty-two thousand and chip seal with that? And that's absolutely, yes. And we don't have to take all of that. It was just one to get down to that
Yeah, yeah.
three percent. So if you wanted to find it from somewhere else, and there was eighty thousand in the chip seal, then, or we can still take it from the one forty-five to make it. This year, I got a quote, a couple quotes, and roughly about five and a half miles of road, it was a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. So maybe we could do three and a half miles of road to cut it down, or four miles and to cut it. It, it, there's numbers to play with. If I have a number that everyone's agreed upon, then I can make that work, and that's... Does that make sense, Liza?
Yeah.
So, Selectwoman Waschinsky, what Donna just did was divide it half between the capital reserve and half out of that public works line item, and gets us to a three percent. A negative three percent. Again, and this is all assuming that the Board of Finance were to cut our budget at three percent. They're, they're taking all of the information and what that would mean for every budget submitter, and see what that looked like to the town.
Selectwoman Boritz, so in that situation, so we send a letter, like, let's say this is what we approve. We would send a letter along with it to the Board of Finance, letting them know that this means we have fewer roads that are paved, and this means we have less money that's in capital reserve should we need it for any capital projects that arise unexpectedly. And that would, you know, be then, Board of Finance would then look at that and say, that seems reasonable, or that doesn't seem reasonable, and, um, decide what to do with that, with our proposals, correct?
Selectwoman Waschinsky, yes, that would be correct. Okay. So just for information purposes, when the Board of Finance spoke and they talked about looking at these cuts, they looked at scenarios and what a mill rate would look like if they took four hundred thousand from the general fund and a flat budget, so our zero percent for everyone over last year, and it, it enabled, that enabled us to keep the mill rate at zero. Donna, was that correct? Am I correct in, in that?
Um, Erica, I, I lost you in the conversation, I'm sorry.
When the Board of Finance, they did an exercise in what it would look like if we had a flat budget, and they included the four hundred thousand from the-
Yep, from the fund balance, if they applied four hundred thousand. Okay, so, um-
I believe that allowed us, would, would, those numbers would allow them to have a flat mill rate?
Yes, I, I need to run it through my spreadsheet just to reconfirm it, but it sounds about right.
Okay, that's what I recalled from their meeting, and I, and again, I know every budget, so just for information purposes, flat funding with money from the general fund allowed for the same mill rate, which would be the fourth year in a row at the same mill rate. So certainly not an increase in services in Willington. And it's important to note, Region nineteen has already approved their budget. I don't know if they would open up and go back and look at it again, but they're currently, have voted and approved a budget, and the schools are going to be hindered by MBR, and if they are penalized for going below MBR, they would be, it comes out of ECS, so that's revenue to the town. So just a bigger picture that the Board of Finance is going to be looking at, but it's important for us all to be aware of.
Selectwoman Boritz, so I was in that, I was on that budget call, and one of the questions that I have, and I'm not sure if anybody answered this, or if this is just conjecture at this point, but do you have an idea if Board of Finance is going to be looking at each individual budget and picking and choosing and saying, this one makes sense to do negative three, this one makes sense to do a flat budget, or if, you know, they're going to be going across the board and saying, either we're taking the zero percents, or we're taking the negative three percents for everybody?
Selectwoman Waschinsky, I, they didn't, they didn't talk about, about it that far. They had a member that wanted to see what a negative three looked like. I think they wanted to see what a negative three across the board would look like in terms of not just dollars, but effect on different budgets, because a negative three for our budget is very different from a negative three from the emergency services budget. It's very significant for them, and, and it's significant for ours, but maybe not as central mental, or if we took an individual budget, like Parks and Rec can cut negative three percent, the impact is different. So I'm not sure if they're planning to look at they, an overall government budget at negative three, or if they were going to take individual budgets and see what they worked out, because that would be a very different bottom-line increase.
Okay. So, Selectwoman Boritz, I would like to say, first of all, I want to acknowledge what John read into the minutes. And I, I hear that take, and I, I want to acknowledge that I, I don't completely disagree in, in a, in a big picture. I would like to say, however, I think, um, Willington is not matching its peers in terms of, you know, keeping pace with salaries. So I, I do believe that Willington is a little bit of an anomaly in that, you know, for that article and that perspective, in that for a long time, we have been under, you know, funding our, our services and our, our staff positions, and I think we've, for a very long time, we've been making sort of minimum increases in all of these areas, fund, you know, programmatic funding and, and staff funding. I would, I would like to make a motion to approve this plan of splitting from the hundred and four, half of it from Troy's line item, and half of it from the capital reserve line item.
I'll second that.
Selectwoman Blessington, well, if we're talking about capital reserve now, there are several items that were on there that were in the motion that we tabled. Are we going to decide which items we're going to do, or are we just gonna give it a dollar value? Second of all, once again, we're taking a tremendous amount of money from one program, and I think, and it's, I think it's a fairly important program. Of course, it feels good. We can take it out there, and, um, maybe it'll make the roads better. Again, I question why it was in there if it could so easily be cut out. If we want to cut that. And then, of course, oh, and incidentally, I would like to go on record with my own opinion, it's not that we underpay our workers so much, I think, is that maybe other towns overpay quite a bit. And yes, I know, everybody needs money, but, uh, nobody that I know of has decided, I can't, I can't afford to work for this town anymore, I'm leaving. I just haven't seen that happening. When that starts happening, then I will worry about it.
I think we have seen a couple of instances of that happening over the last two years, John. So regardless, that is not, I mean, I'm not interested in engaging in that debate at the moment. So I actually... One question before we sec, vote on my motion or whatever. So I think the point about the pickleball court. Does that, if we take that out of this year's budget, push that forward, is that something that affects our bottom line? I don't remember clearly on that answer. We went back and forth on that one a couple times.
So, for Selectwoman Woschinski, I would suggest that we vote on this budget and then look at CIP and then go through that with the fewer dollars that we would have once we make this adjustment. So if this were to pass, then we take a look at CIP and the projects in there and how to make the dollars that are in CIP work for what we want to send forward if there's a 3% cut. So I would take it separately. We've adjusted the dollars into that reserve amount, and then we can look at the individual projects in the plan. If that is amenable.
Okay, then, can I do some quick math?
Of course you can. Or we could...
And I, yeah. Make sure I'm in the right budget. I did that wrong.
I apologize.
Okay, um... So it's, I think it's hard to do it that way because... So, I don't know. Tell me if this makes sense, okay? So considering the pickleball court, which I think would be very nice to have, but certainly this year, we're not looking at being able to even enjoy it, even if we did have it. So I feel like pushing that off makes a lot of sense if that affects our bottom line. And then same thing with the 45,000, the Old Town Hall Septic, pushing that off as well. So that, if, if we took those two items off of the CIP budget this year, then that's $84,346 of taking that off of this year's CIP.
Selectwoman, first, Selectwoman Woschinski, Liza, you could amend your motion with those changes, and that's one way for us to incorporate all into one motion.
Okay. So then can I make a motion, amend my previous motion and make a motion to take $84,346 from the capital reserve budget and the remainder, and Donna can do that math, the remainder from the line item that Troy was proposing?
So it would be $84,346 out of the capital reserve and $19,654 out of Troy's budget for a total of 104,000.
Okay.
So instead of splitting in half, we took a little bit more from, or a lot more, from one side to the other. If that is what you intended.
That is what I proposed. Yes. That's what I intended to motion.
I will second that amendment. Okay, so discussion on the amended motion.
Selectwoman Blessington, we are cutting out two items that we could afford, very easily afford to cut out this year, but we kind of ignored the $100,000 for the building committee consultants. Are we going to have a building committee this year? We are looking at heading into a recession, probably a depression by the time this whole this whole virus thing blows over. I don't know if we're going to be able to afford to build a school, but that $100,000, by God, once we've spent that, we'll have that much into it. I think that is where I would suggest that we cut out. And I would suggest also that we cut out that and the pickleball court and the and the Old Town Hall Septic system. And there would be your savings right there.
Selectwoman, Boritz, quick question. I thought I had understood from a previous conversation that that $100,000 doesn't impact our bottom line. Or am I misremembering?
First, Selectwoman Woschinski, it comes from that reserve fund, so it's dollars, the dollars into the reserve. That's, that's where currently it's sourced to come from, is the capital reserve fund.
Okay, then I misunderstood something earlier.
I also, the townspeople voted to have, to form a school building committee. I think we're obligated to move forward with a school building committee, John. And yes, we, listen, we put that off because we were waiting for you to return to the table. And then we, you know, we put off till we could find the proper way to address appointing people to that committee in this forum, which we are all just getting used to. We may be in this forum for a while, so this may be the forum in which we appoint the school building committee. But we held a town meeting, a vote was taken, and we, we still need to honor that. Does that mean a new, we're ready for a new school, or we can afford one? That's not the question that that, that question didn't answer that. It allows a building committee to do that. And in order to get a proper answer and in order for us to, at some point, be able to have some savings in our schools and our two buildings, we're going to have to do something. What that looks like remains to be seen, and that committee will do that work. And they would need some money. Do we, you know, could we cut it to half? Do we leave it whole? I'm in the mindset that we need to leave the money so that we can get answers to that question and move in one direction, finally. But, but yes, in, if you're asking if we're going to have a school building committee, the answer is yes. And I'd hope sooner rather than later. That's, that's my opinion on that.
In answer, Erica, yes, I do remember we had a town, town meeting that authorized that. As a matter of fact, if I remember correctly, during that town meeting, you assured the people that this was just a committee which was going to study and it wasn't going to cost the town anything.
Selectwoman Woschinski, I said that the vote that we were taking there had no dollars attached to it. I was very clear about that, John. A future project to have someone work with you is going to have some dollars, but forming the committee does not, look, we don't have to give them any dollars. We can let them sit around in a room and have the discussion and then see what they can do with it. Eventually, they're going to come with us, come to us. And in order to answer the question as to whether or not a school in this town is going to be built and what the real amount of that looks like, is going to have to spend some dollars. No one hid that. But the question on the table at the town meeting did not require dollars. That is correct.
Oh, okay.
We can argue semantics, John, but that, there's a motion on the table as to a CIP plan. And it does include $100,000 currently with Liza's amended motion. As well as two projects for the school, a $10,000 boiler replacement for the town office building, $30,000 for drainage work on Village Hill, $48,000 in costs for Lisca Road culverts engineering, a defibrillator, replacing the defibrillator on an ambulance, an oil tank replacement at Wellington Fire Department Number 1, and bunker gear for Wellington Fire Department Number 1. Donna, can you tell me, is the, is there low sub funds? Would there be low sub funds available to, um... If we remove, the Old Town Hall Septic currently is using low sub funds. So those dollars wouldn't change, correct? Liza, I think you were using that money, that 45,000 in your calculations?
Yes, I was.
It's, so that number wouldn't change that, you know, we could just not have that project, but it wouldn't... The capital reserve dollars would just be additional dollars we were decreasing by. The project came from low sub fund. Would, is it possible to, I hear what you're saying, we may not be able to use a pickleball court until, we're not really sure when. But is it possible to use low sub funds if we took it from the Old Town Hall Septic and replace that project with low sub funds? And again, that's assuming low sub funds become available.
Are you asking me that question?
I'm asking Donna.
Okay, because I ain't going to be able to give you an answer.
Okay, so you are thinking that instead of spending $45,000 on the Old Town Hall Septic, you are going to spend $39,346 on the pickleball court. Is that true?
From low sub funds, yes.
From low sub.
Because the cut that Liza suggested, the $84,000, although it equates to those two projects, the dollars don't come from the same source. Correct me if I'm wrong, Donna.
You're correct. They don't come from the same source. So it looks like it's, that would be okay.
We could still cut the, the reserve fund by those same dollars, but allow for the pickleball court to remain if our low sub funds are available. And again, we've heard nothing as, from the state, as far as any reduction in revenue to the town, but I don't know that that won't change. We just have not heard any discussion of that as of yet.
Are we going back to what we said the other night, which, because the Labor Department has not told us that we're in a recession, we're not in a recession yet? This, again, we're doing, doing semantics here. Pickleball court is assuming that low sub is going to pay for it, okay, I don't know. What happens if low sub doesn't come through? Because right now, you know, everything keeps changing day by day. Then we don't do the pickleball court?
Correct.
Correct.
First, Selectwoman Woschinski, without the funds, the, the project isn't able to go forward. That is correct. We would need to know and have secured funds, low sub funds, before the project began.
And that, and those funds cannot go towards the Old Town Hall Septic system instead?
If one project was dropped and that septic needed to be done, we could see if there were low sub funds available. I don't see why not. But if there aren't low sub funds available, then the project wouldn't come from that funding source.
For the record, I'm still in favor of dropping both the pickleball court and the Old Town Hall Septic system.
So the motion on the table is to, was to remove the $84,346 from the capital reserve. And then $19,654, if my numbers are correct, from Public Works, is the amended motion.
Right.
And that gets us to our 104,003% decrease. Again, these cuts are all assuming we need to then have a 3% final budget. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All right, I'll say, all those in favor? Liza?
Hi.
John?
Aye.
Erica?
Aye.
All right, so that motion passes. That brings us to, so now we have two budgets. Ones I presented with you on Monday that was 0 and one that's 3%. That's what they've asked for to look at. The last one we voted on was a 4.5% increase and then went in to hear what they wanted to hear from, what, what the plan at Board of Finance was. When they made those discussions, I made more cuts and got us to 0. If you're both in agreement, I will forward these budgets on so that they can see what a proposed 0, what a proposed negative 3 would look like from the selectman's budget.
Do we have to make a motion on that, Erica?
I would accept a motion.
I'll make a motion that you forward on those agreed-upon budgets to the Board of Finance.
I'll second. Erica Woschinski? Any discussion?
John Blessington, I'm not sure why we're voting on this motion. You did, it did win by a 2 to 1 vote. And I hope you will make that clear in your letter to the Board of Finance, if this was not a unanimous vote.
John, first, Selectwoman Woschinski, I would remind us all that a vote of the Board is, a majority vote of the Board of Selectmen is now the Board of Selectmen's budget. And that's... That's what I have to say about that. So this would then be, you know, our proposed 0 and proposed negative 3% budget of the Board of Selectmen.
And you're correct, but it was not a unanimous.
No one said that it was, but it is still the Board of Selectmen's proposed budget. Is there any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor of forwarding the 0 and negative 3 proposed budgets to the Board of Finance, signify by saying aye. Liza?
Aye.
John?
I don't believe this is a valid motion. I will abstain.
Erica, aye. I will forward those on to the Board of Finance. Seeing no other item on the agenda, I move to adjourn at 12:58.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all, Donna. Thank you for your hard work. To all our department heads, I thank you. And we will see what happens now when we forward these to the Board of Finance.
Thank you, everybody, for your work.